Very good, the motion passed, thank you.
All right, moving on to item four. Public hearing recommendation on a general plan amendment to remove the Lawrence Station Phase Two, Central Expressway and De La Cruz focus areas. What, are you going to scrape them off the face of the earth?
Why?
Just the map.
Remove it from what?
Remove focus on it.
Thank you Chair, good evening. Steve Lee, senior planner, project planner for this item four here. So the considerations or the actions for considerations before you is the recommendations to the city council to approve the general plan amendment to remove the following focus areas. Lawrence Station Phase Two is west of the Lawrence Expressway, that's a focus area. And the other two sites, Central Expressway, future focus area, and the De La Cruz, future focus area. Here is the map of the original, just all the focus area and future focus area. Just explain what you're seeing here. Lawrence Station Phase Two, that's in dark blue, that's a focus area that's to be removed. The two other blue, lighter blue, Central Expressway and De La Cruz, future focus area to the right there. Some of these other areas highlighted in terracotta here is specific and precise plans already approved. These are areas where housing or transitioning to. And next slide here, why are we removing them? So there's land use transitions. Housing has transitions outside of these subject areas, these focus areas. And then it's to maintain the existing industrial and office use. We don't see these sites as ideal sites to turn over from office warehouse industrial to housing. Also, just consistency with state laws requiring general plan consistency with zoning. So we did a zoning code update of recent and ensuring that the zoning district that we have now, the industrial, is consistent with the general plan. So we're proposing to maintain that industrial use of those sites. I'll go one by one on each of the site here. Lawrence Station Phase Two focus area, current zoning districts, light industrial. This is bounded by Central Expressway to the north, Kafer Road to the south, and Sunnyvale to your west. The general plan right now is light industrial. The existing use is mostly manufacturers and offices. So the property owners here, you know, large property owners doesn't show any interest to change these sites to residential. So that's the reason for the change in this area. The Central Expressway, future focus area, this light industrial as well, one small PD, planned development site for, I believe, manufacturer or data center. General plan is light industrial and, you know, for this reasons, the site is primarily data centers and offices. And you won't see data centers changing to residential anytime soon. So that's the reason for this site. Last site here, De La Cruz, future focus area. Again, light industrial and even heavy industrial zoning district presently. And same thing with general plan. Existing uses are manufacturer, warehouse, and office throughout this site. You know, this is also located near the airport. So, you know, airport landing zone would call for lower density. So, and there's a lot of multiple property owners here. It's going to be difficult to consolidate them and turn them over to residential. So that's the reason for this site. As far as public outreach, we did a committee meeting. We sent a large notice, 500 feet around each of these sites here. Twenty people attended. Three spoke on affordable housing, you know, what happens in this, you know, where the housing moving to, and the transition into specific plan areas. On January 29th, we did a referral for tribal consultations, just per state law. No consultations was asked from us. And then April 2nd, the notice of public hearing for this meeting, as well as we mailed out 500 feet for all three of this area. Two callers, residents in the De La Cruz, asked, you know, just for clarifications, what's the request? And so I provide that. So yeah, and one email requesting the clarifications as well. Okay. For environmental, it was already previously evaluated. On January 31st, when city council approved the addendum to the sixth cycle of the housing element, it was already considered to remove these three areas. So these areas are not accounted in the inventory. And so that brings to staff recommendations for planning committees to adopt resolutions to recommend the city council amend the general plan to remove the Lawrence Station Phase Two focus area, Central Expressway, and De La Cruz future focus areas, and make associated text at this. I'm here to answer any questions you have.
Let's start with a simple one, for the benefit of the video and for anyone watching this later. Define focus area.
Define where the focus areas are?
Yeah.
It is in the diagram in the general plan, and that is on figure.
I think what he means is what a focus area means in our general plan.
My glasses focus, you know, a lot of things focus, but let's get the terminology in more.
It is in chapter 5.4 of our general plan. Focus areas is where the general plan anticipate residential development. We identify them as focus area and some in future focus area. And over time, some of these housings, you know, become a specific plan, precise plan, like the downtown precise plan, and others have gone away. Like, we're removing these sites here. Does that answer your questions?
Yeah. I wanted to make sure it was something that other people could understand when they came back and look at this, because it's a magical term for most people. Other questions?
Through the chair. So this is just a hypothesis. So we are saying you, we don't want to have residences here, we want to have data centers here.
They're already there.
My point, if you had had a focus area, they would be grandfathered and not new. You just made my case. To basically say this is almost sounding like a vested interest. I will leave my hypothesis for interpretation, and I'd like to know where the origin of this came from.
May I submit, focus areas, the idea is that these are spots we have identified where we will do a precise plan later down the road. So there's actually general plan policies that before you do redevelopment, you got to do a precise plan for this entire area, like a specific plan. So by de-designating these as focus areas, it just means it's an area with a lot of industrial parcels. If one or more property owners want to redevelop their land, they simply apply for a rezoning in a general plan amendment. There's no longer a requirement that the entire area have a precise plan or a specific plan, because we think it's simply unlikely that that's going to happen in any foreseeable timeline. So individual sites could redevelop, but we're not requiring that the whole region get a precise plan before they can redevelop.
Nice try.
Because we just don't think it's likely to happen.
Nice explanations, Andrew, thank you so much. That was just a long way of saying, no, that was not our intent. It is really, you know, another way. You have a gazillion other specific plans, you have a gazillion other precise plans underway. There is no reason why only these are recommended to be removed and not those specific plans that have. El Camino precise plan, let's give it a shot. Okay, that is in focus right now. We have housing as becoming the much more. Currently, it's a retail, this light, you know, maybe light industrial along the way of El Camino. But here we are. El Camino precise plan is fully fledged and is in motion. This is the same, I would say, notion when we said, okay, these are focus areas for the city to encourage more, a different use possible. And the focus area is to see, can there be housing? By intentionally removing it, now we no longer have a focus, because, and then the existing zoning and existing general plan will continue to just allow. Exactly. So there is no more, there is no more interest or intention.
For housing.
Exactly.
Correct, yes. And Central Expressway, particularly given the number of data centers there, it would be very difficult to make a neighborhood.
Different.
Correct.
Microphone?
On the other side, yeah, there's.
Correct. Yes.
Yeah, there's already residential areas alongside the Central Expressway, but close to Costco.
Yes, and not that area, the Central Expressway for the purpose of this map, yes.
Yeah, but they're coming down towards this area here. I see it coming down towards the, towards where the fiberglass companies. I see it coming this way. Oh, God, I, yeah, you're telling me. I used to run the pre-trail, like a CMB and built, I'd go, what the heck's going on?
Central Expressway appears to be coming, or turning into the proverbial railroad tracks. And if you build on one side, you get one thing, and if you build on the other, you get residential. So I understand the logic of this. It's, it just makes sense, I guess, to ease up on forcing group development. But is there other implications to this that aren't being presented in this presentation? Are there other concerns that you want to convey? Is this easing up the ability for developers to work in this area, or is it restricting them more?
Well, it's easing because you cannot develop residential right now. You have to do a comprehensive plan first. This removes the requirement to have a comprehensive plan for individual parcels. An individual developer cannot just rezone a site right now. They'd have to get a specific plan first, which is, you know, a multi-year process.
Does this, I'm sorry, I'm occupying here, but does this create a situation where we will result in a patchwork quilt of development within those areas? Because the transitions are not being maintained any longer.
Yeah, if you were to want to convert the industrial office land to residential, yes.
Yeah, that's the purpose of the precise plan requirement, to have a unified vision for the region. But, you know, since we just don't think there's a likely redevelopment.
Correct.
Just a real simple one, just being nice. So if somebody, let's say we do this, right? City council approves it, and somebody in that zone wants to build a data center. Would they have to come here and ask permission, or is it like, nah? It's already zoned properly, you can do it.
They'd need a CUP.
Yeah. Conditional use permit?
Yeah, sorry, conditional use permit.
It's currently zoned industrial. A data center requires a CUP. They would need that. Actually, whether you take this action or not.
Correct, yes.
Yes.
So to carry this logic further, right? It's important. So, so the commission then denies, then it's appealed to the city. It passes, and the first data center that gets built in any of these areas prohibits anything else being built in that area. And then it'll get populated with data centers before you know what.
There you go.
To be clear, data centers can be developed today.
Yes.
Whether you do this or not, the only thing this will do is allow for piecemeal residential development. Our current general plan does not allow individual residential development in these areas without a comprehensive plan. But data centers, they can go in today, they can go in whether you remove this or not.
I see.
So does it make it easier for data centers or easier for residential?
It makes it easier for residential. Data centers, I mean, well, okay. So if you leave the focus area requirement in place.
Right.
And then there's actually a movement to develop a specific plan, and zone it all as residential. Once that specific plan is in place, then it would be hard for new data centers to go in.
Understood.
That's a long way down the road.
But otherwise, I think I have the answer I need.
Yeah, let's ask the question. Can I ask the question, like, just look at the other side of this question, right? What if we leave it as focus areas? What do we lose?
You lose the potential for individual sites to go residential. Right now, there's no concerted effort to take large swathes of land and form a specific plan on these.
So in this, you think there is potential that, there is potential that in these industrial areas, light industrial, whatever, these very highly industrialized areas, there's any chance anybody will want to put a residential tower or space in there?
Yeah. There has been interest, and the city does not think this is an appropriate place to put residential this time, which is why we'd like to remove the focus area for residential.
Hold on a second.
Slow down.
There's going to be something coming in front of us that is light industrial, office, or across from Costco. I believe that's going to be coming in front of us.
Yes.
And that's close to, you know, there's no housing there except on the other side. And that's almost right next to the runways, about a block from the runways. And it's going to be coming in front of us, that's one of the things.
Correct.
You know, you completely, you know, never thought of building houses there.
Correct.
Except also what they build apartments where FMC used to be. Yeah, so this is a lot of.
Correct.
Yeah. So it could happen, folks.
Yes, it could, absolutely.
And it probably will happen, folks. And not in our term, I don't think.
My turn. So it is theoretically possible that you would get housing in these areas if, for example, low-cost housing, retirement are two candidates that would logically not concern themselves as much with being in an industrial, previously industrial area, because the property might be less expensive and the opportunity to build taller might be more available. So it feels like a double-edged sword, in the sense that, yes, we could encourage data centers, but they're going to come one place or another anyway. But it could also equally encourage satisfying more of our low-cost housing and retirement and other less residential thinking groups.
If you actually take a look at the aerial that's on the screen, the areas that are north of Central Expressway, a majority of those buildings already are data centers. Some of them south of Central Expressway are data centers, yeah, where Steve is pointing. The ones along Walsh, the properties along Walsh, those small office buildings, really are the only ones with potential to develop as residential. And really, that doesn't make, that doesn't make good land use planning or a good neighborhood. So the city really felt, we are developing residential neighborhoods elsewhere. We've done the Freedom Circle focus area, which was not contemplated previously in the general plan. And so that would be a better swap for this focus area that was, you know, this focus area was originally considered in 2010 as a possibility for residential, but given the development that's happened since then, and we've moved to do the Freedom Circle focus area instead, where residential is actually developing, that we should take this one away and now focus on somewhere else.
One of the things that you mentioned, just to lighten you up here. Walsh, there was offices, there wasn't any industrial or anything, there were just offices, and that's abutting residential area. So if you put the data centers or whatever as in there, you're going to be putting right in the back door of a residential area. And that's what my concerns are. I'm pretty sure nobody in the city council wants to have a data center in their back door.
Let's save that for the data center.
Yeah, so, so no. This is our conversation.
What we're going to be voting on right now.
Through the chair, so my, the focus today is, no pun intended, sorry, the words are here. But the real intent here is to remove focus on these areas for a possible future, whatever use it wants to be.
Conversion to residential.
Mostly residential.
Yes.
The irony of it is, the current interest is not self-proclaiming that it can allow housing, because housing will need a general plan amendment under the current, because it's light industrial. So if a developer wants to come in, that would be the developers' now new general plan amendment, zoning amendment, which is an additional layer versus a focus area that would have encouraged a possibility of a housing happening more as a nature of right, by right. So the probability of that happening now is gone, is what I am trying to say. So when we say the city has no interest, we're not asking the city to do it tomorrow or even in the next five years, but why remove the focus, is my challenge. When you say the city thought of it, you're basically sending the green signal to say those parcels along Walsh are really future data sites, because what else can come there?
Well, they already can be.
That's what I'm saying. But if you had a focus area in thought process, technically, they could be offices, they could be retail that are abutting the housing.
They could be today.
No, that has to come with a general plan amendment.
No, no, they, they.
Well, they're light industrial general plan.
Well, light industrial allows some amount of office, but yes.
But I'm saying that it is not focused towards residential or supplemental residential.
Right, well, the point of a focus area is that the general plan is telling the city where we want to put our residential growth. That's the point of a focus area.
And then you're basically declaring, we don't want residential here.
The point of removing this is that, yes, we're declaring we would not like to put residential growth here.
In essence, we are now telling the city, no, we don't want.
Don't worry about residential.
Exactly, in these.
In this location.
In these areas, yeah.
In these areas.
It doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to be data centers.
Correct.
Because they also have no electricity, and there's a waiting list of, what, like 10 years? Is what I heard last time.
Well, that's in the video, that's going to be.
No, it's not in the video. But there are other people that have been wanting it, but okay. So we got a couple of questions we want to ask here. So in, in making the focus, okay, from a staff perspective, by doing this, right? There's two areas of questions I had. One you had in there, and this is a simple one, on the presentation, you had talked about that this brings us in line with some state regulations and stuff?
General plan consistency.
Yeah, could you elaborate just a little bit more on that? So if we didn't do this, we would be out of?
Yeah, so you, right now, it's a zone as light industrials, heavy industrials. And now there's conflict, because then if you anticipate for this residential in the focus area, you're not aligned with the current use, which is light industrial, heavy industrial.
And what is the consequence of that?
I don't think there's legal vulnerability. It's just awkward. It's not, you know, I mean, there's, you can't have a general plan that's internally inconsistent. This is not a legal inconsistency. This just preserves this possibility. If you don't change it, we're just saying, okay, maybe it will change to residential and will require a comprehensive plan.
Mixed messages.
Because in the presentation, it talked about it, to bring it inconsistent with state. Did I misinterpret that?
Well, I mean, we have, we have focus area policies. So it's a little awkward to have policies about this area that we don't believe is ever going to redevelop this housing. It's like, but.
That part I got really well. That's not a problem, I understand that part. It's just, okay, we're not going to be, if we said we didn't do it, we're all of a sudden going to have a different problem, that we're going to have to deal with the state saying, hey, you're not in line with our regulations, right?
It's, it looks funny. It wouldn't be my first pick for how to draft the general plan, but it's not going to get us into legal trouble if you decide to preserve them.
Okay, then my second question was, okay, you got a lot of work to do, staff-wise, right? If we said, okay, we're going to keep this as a focus area, how does that affect staff and our ability to work on all these different projects at the same time? Is it something we can say, look, yeah, it's focused, but that doesn't mean we have to do it tomorrow anyway. We can just leave it for however long we want to do, but there will be focus at some point, right?
It won't generate any extra work for staff.
Okay.
Other than that directs people to try to propose development in wrong locations.
But not specific development projects, it'd have to be the entire area.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I want to make sure that we're not burdening staff in some way by whatever way we go.
After that, we thank you.
We do get a considerable number of phone calls, so I can say, we answer a lot of phone calls, specifically in this area, and emails and meetings, so there is some staff time.
Okay.
Just because of the message that the focus area sends, that this could be residential.
Let me double-check that I'm hearing this correctly, that you're saying it would ease development to remove the focus areas for those areas to be able to diversify into other types of development.
It would, it would send a more appropriate message that, you know, residential isn't appropriate in this area any longer, given the existing built uses.
Is or isn't?
Is not.
The planners have made the call that this is not an appropriate area for housing and have suggested we should remove the focus areas that say this is a good place for housing. We have a general plan policy that says you cannot put housing in these areas until we get a precise plan for the entire region. By removing the focus areas, that policy will no longer apply. You no longer need a precise plan for housing for the entire region, because we don't think it's a good place for housing at all. We don't want housing there. If somebody comes in with a housing proposal without the focus area constraint, they can simply apply for a general plan amendment and rezone.
Right.
And staff may recommend denial, because they think this is a bad place for housing. They don't think you should have housing right in the middle of an industrial area.
Now, that contradicts my original question about patchwork, so if you.
They can apply for a patchwork.
Right.
But staff may recommend denial. But right now, they can't even apply for a patchwork. They have to get a precise plan.
Well, I've always been in favor of options instead of mandated development. I'm concerned that it's going to discourage concerted effort for development of housing, specifically in those focus areas.
It will.
But we have, we're not diminishing the available options people have for housing. We're just saying that these are not good areas for it.
Correct.
That's kind of a, that's a tough mental.
My head hurts.
We've done lots of other conversions to make up for removing these, these focus areas, you know, such as adding the Freedom Circle focus area, which wasn't anticipated. The Kylie project in itself, which wasn't, you know, office industrial, was converted to allow housing, so.
The city is actually generating its own focus areas through the very nature.
Through other conversions.
Individual developers building in certain spaces. They're sort of evolving a housing-friendly zone within our city by developing in those places.
Right, right.
And that seems natural, that's SimCity, unusual.
I mean, the, at the time when these were designated as focus areas, the conflict already existed. It was pretty apparent, everybody knew.
No, not this much, no.
This was 15 years ago, 2010, or a little before that.
Yeah. Yeah.
We only had 30 data centers.
A lot of these didn't, a lot of these didn't exist.
That's the problem.
A lot of these did not exist.
All right, so, where are we?
We're at a point where we could probably make a motion.
Well, wait a minute, don't we have?
It's public, yeah.
Public hearing, so can I move to open public hearing?
Please.
Move to open public hearing.
It's by consensus.
It's disconsent, consensually, just.
All right, good.
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
If anyone would like to speak on this particular topic, it's a good opportunity right now. If you have an opinion, please.
I do have a hand online. Linda, you can go ahead and unmute and speak.
Okay, it's Linda again, Linda Nepper. And if you look at the screen that you were showing, which I can't see right now, where Walsh curves down the ankle, basically, there's a big data center right there. And the city council has agreed to have a data center, by my understanding, actually on Bowers. Right now, it's a mostly empty space. The ones that I really wanted to talk about, and I don't know how to see it on the screen, is the Lawrence Station. Lawrence Station is an intersection of Sunnyvale, Santa Clara County, and Santa Clara City. The reason why I bring that up is because they did a great job on rebuilding the Caltrain Lawrence Station, and then they didn't do streetlights. Nobody thought it was their problem. They finally did streetlights. The other part is, right now, the city of Sunnyvale has just south of the Caltrain Lawrence. right now, the city of Sunnyvale has, just south of the Caltrain-Lawrence Station, built a humongous amount of housing, apartments. And just north of Caltrain Station, Lawrence Station, is another building that I think is supposed to be senior housing, but I'm not sure on that. So that area is getting built up. Once you get up to Kafer or whatever, whatever is closer to, across the street from Costco, yes, that is a, an office building. And I just figure that putting it in the mix of make sure that you know where the boundary lines are and what's happening just over the boundary. Thank you.
That's a fair comment. You wanna look at how that puzzle piece fits to the adjacent pieces, to make sure that we're encouraging similar development to create pods of residential rather than isolated islands, or similar development, obviously. Okay. Any other speakers? Thank you for that.
No, we don't have any other speakers.
All right, motion.
Move to close.
Go ahead and cast your vote, please.
This is to close public hearing?
Yes, it is. Close public hearing. Commissioner Bottinger, your vote is not showing, but I'll put you down as a yes.
Again?
Okay, very good. Thank you.
All right, now for time for motion?
Actually, if there's any last comments, your opportunity is now for someone to motions.
So just a question to staff through the chair. What if we do not recommend? What happens?
It's a general plan amendment, so it will be forwarded to the city council with your recommendation of denial, or your recommendation of no action.
It's no action.
Either way, it goes to city council, yes.
Okay, council gets the next pass at it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, of course.
Either way.
Either way.
Okay.
Well, I'm gonna broadcast my intent. I find it more helpful to have options available rather than forcing large groups or large chunks of our areas to be similarly developed. But I think the natural evolution of the city is going to define it more than any focus area is going to, so having them gone would make it actually easier for the evolution to naturally happen. No false barriers, so I'm kind of
That would be a logic for all focus areas.
Not disagreeing with that statement.
Yeah, that's gonna be for all the focus area.
Anyway, so, shall somebody make a motion?
Well, I'm interested, because right now, I'm trying to really sort whether removing the focus area makes it easier or worse to do housing, as I understand it with the focus area there. You gotta have like a big overarching plan. Without the focus area, hey, I might wanna put a residential spot in this parcel and something else, including data center in another parcel. So I am struggling over what makes it more easier for a developer to come in and do residential. I understand city staff says, hey, you know, we don't think it's a good idea to put residential there. I'm gonna guess that's because of all the data centers and the light industrial around it. But with RHNA's and all that stuff going on, there's another part of me that says, so why do you wanna take the focus area away then? Maybe, maybe, so I guess what I'm trying to do is ensure that we do something in a way that allows for more residential to be built, without doing it in such a way that says, we're gonna make it so easy for a data center that nobody's gonna really wanna do residential, because the developer's gonna get more out of a data center. And, yeah, 'cause that's where the money is, you're right.
Yeah, but I, you know, here, I agree with your sentiment in one sense, but I also agree that what staff is saying makes sense, because it is an industrial area. It isn't necessarily that they're gonna all do data centers, and I think we're getting too hung up on that it's all gonna become data centers.
Well, yeah.
But it's also not an area that I necessarily would wanna create a residential either.
Well, me either, but I'm looking at, when I have conversations with neighbors, friends and family in the city about affordable housing, and the eyes immediately roll over, you wanna tell me what's affordable and what isn't? And would this be a place where affordable would be, you know, because you can go higher, that it might be more feasible, more okay to do a high tower residential in a place that's got a lot of industrial? I mean, it's a, I'm not sure which way I'm gonna go right now. I think I know.
So I'll ask you one question about that.
Yeah.
How much stuff that we've approved actually winds up bringing a lot of affordable housing here, especially housing that you can purchase rather than rent?
Dare I say, well, there might not be quite zero, but talking to most people who have a definition of affordable in this city that I know, they tell me zero, okay? Because with the AMI, which I thought was more than 160, I understood it to be 184. So even 50% of that is more money than most service makers make per year, so, you know, there you go.
Even if you make, even if you make $250,000, most young families cannot afford it.
You know, I'm less worried about how many developers could increase their bottom line as I am about how many service workers and teachers could live in the city that they work in. There's that. Thank you.
That's a bigger
Conversation.
It is, but how much this plays into it.
I totally agree, and we actually have a item seven, which can help us focus on that. So let's
Right.
Yeah.
Make a motion?
Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
But if I can just add my logic to the conversation. If we didn't remove the focus area, just like everyday life, you will still get the applications that are coming either way. The question why we are here today is, we have a certain interest, or had an interest 15 years ago, to revisit or revision the opportunity sites that the city can think of, and this was one of many. We have so many focus areas. The hyper-focus right now to remove these is giving me an added sense that there is another layer at play here, because if you had not brought this to our attention, you know, it would be a data center, it would be a housing project, it would be a zoning amendment, what, it would have been normal life. But bringing this to an attention is now telling us, okay, we are removing this with a message saying that this is more open and less housing-friendly. It's more open to light industrial. And I'm not saying any particular business other than light industrial as its classification, but it's less friendly for housing. With the focus, you could have still, 15 years even down from today, you could have still thought, hmm, maybe we can still consider housing. But right now, we're just saying, no.
Yeah. Things, things will change. Look, for instance, where Reliant built the new high rises, that was a light industrial, and some manufacturing there. Who would have thought 50, 55 years ago
Yeah.
that that was gonna happen there? So what we're gonna be doing is closing the door on everything. So things change, and we don't know, we're not gonna be here. Most of us will probably won't be here, and how things are gonna change, but it's all gonna come back to us. As I said, how come those guys sitting on the, that commissioner is so dumb that they couldn't see the future? And that's, that's the problem that I, you know, that kind of bothers me. Things will change. Data centers may end up disappearing someday, too, the same way that a lot of the other manufacturing did in our city. So let's just keep this open. So go back to it.
Let's try and get back into the past.
Make a motion?
Make a motion, please.
A motion, I make a motion that we recommend to the city council, approve an amendment to the general plan to remove the Lawrence Station Phase II focus area and the Central Expressway and De La Cruz future focus areas, and make associated text edits. That, this way, you can say yes or no.
So the motion is to approve staff recommendation?
Yes.
Thank you. Go ahead and cast your vote, please. Commissioner Bottinger?
I did already.
Sorry, it's not showing.
Okay.
And the motion did not pass.
Okay. Well, that's good. That's, that proves that there's confusion and concern. It's worthy of conveying that, and hopefully the council will have a steadier hand and come up to their decision. But, yeah, I, I would have been happy of having no action.
You do need a second motion.
Moving on.
You need a second motion.
I will ask for a second motion.
What?
Oh, well, I mean, a majority of you have expressed that you don't want to recommend approval. If somebody wants to make a motion to recommend disapproval, or to forward it to the council with no recommendation, I would appreciate either of those motions. When you
We'll move, I move that we forward it to council with no recommendation.
That's fair.
But I need, I need an actual formal action taken. With a quasi-judicial decision, if you, if you don't approve it, it goes forward as a denial. With a legislative action like this, I need it actually taken affirmative action. So what you did is fine.
Second's it.
One more.
Yeah, actually, the
Wait, so, so it's, wait, I, I take, I take a challenge on that. So we are basically saying we did not want to make any recommendation to the city. That's not the message that I got here.
That is, that is what Commissioner Crutchlow just made a motion for.
You can make a substitute motion.
Another motion, that's what she was asking, to say, okay, do we have a recommendation at all or not, to allow for that, if the recommendation now is to keep the general plan with, as is, with the focus areas of Lawrence Station to Central Expressway and De La Cruz as focus areas?
Well
Because all this is saying is to remove, but when we said no, that basically said, do not remove.
So first, first of all, parliamentary order here. Did somebody second my motion?
I did.
Okay, just wanna make sure that happened. Now you can make a subsequent motion to say, do this, and that yours actually goes first.
Right, yeah. So that, because I didn't want it to be interpreted that the city council take away that Planning Commission did not make any recommendation at all. That is not the interest. We had a whole deliberation around why we should and why we shouldn't, and we've made an intentional choice to not have the focus areas removed. So the motion flips to say, the recommendation to leave the general plan as is with the focus areas of Lawrence Station to Central Expressway and De La Cruz focus area still in focus, in other words, is the motion.
Would it be easier if I just removed my second, and then it makes it cleaner for her to do a different motion?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's what I thought. I'm removing my second. I'm kind of familiar with parliamentary procedure.
Second being removed, the motion dies. Commissioner Cherek, would you like?
I just made the motion.
I heard it. You're right. Commissioner Cherek just moved to recommend that the focus areas not be removed
Second.
from the general plan.
Let's go.
Commissioner Booza seconded.
Now we'll have the same vote.
So the motion is to recommend that the focus area not be removed?
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay. Go ahead and cast your vote, please. Thank you, and the motion passed.
So you just had the opposite happen.
That's what I'm saying. Now we are recommending
Exactly. But it needs, it needs to happen for legislative actions. We can't infer how you want to change the law.
Yeah, because what would have gone is, Planning Commission did not have any recommendation on this matter to you. Very different.
Yes.
I, I disagree, but, okay, let's just go on.
I'm glad. Let's go.
That was the color I added to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay, so, we don't need a third motion then, because
No.
we've declared as a commission
Oh, please, let's end this one, please.
That we have decided that we don't want it removed
Right.
within majority. All right. So we are on to
Oh, this
Bye. Thanks for visiting.
They like it.
We have a